Walt disappeared.
Okay, it is saying preparing to livestream this meeting.
It's now streaming live on YouTube.
Oh, I typically don't stress about stuff like. I really don't. This one's kind of stressed me. Hello? I was thinking today, why YouTube makes you wait 24 hours before they activate your livestream capabilities? And my only guess is that it was a safety thing for anyone potentially livestreaming a horrific event like.
Yeah.
Someone going and doing the mass shooting or something of that nature.
Yep.
Okay, so I think that we're on.
You are live. We're live on YouTube.
Yep, and there is that 20 second delay.
And it's not interactive, is that right?
Folks that subscribe, let me, um, let me mute this. Um, folks that subscribe to the channel. Can then enter comments into it.
Right.
And so I'm gonna have YouTube up here on the desktop. The Zoom is going through the laptop and it's livestreaming through the laptop. But I'm gonna manage comments through the desktop.
Okay.
And I did indicate to folks that if their question was relevant. Um, and appropriate, then I would just try to at an appropriate time raise it to you all and see if they, you know, at least afford you an opportunity to respond.
Okay. Alright, I'm wondering if that blank gallery panel next to Amy is Chan not getting his video up and running.
Two, two. She wants to be on YouTube.
Hey, sir. Are you able to join us? Great. Alright, we'll see in a minute. Let us know if you have any issues. Okay, bye. He said he's working on it.
He's joined.
We have your video, Jan. How about your audio? Can you hear us?
It still says that you're muted.
Mine did this. Well, he's using the laptop.
Yep.
There you go.
Got it now?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Just right on time. I'm gonna call us to order. So, welcome everyone to our first experiment in remote. Um, meeting, town-wide meeting. Um, are there adjustments to the agenda that you know, anybody knows of?
Oh, I don't have any.
None.
Alright, so, um, have you explained the ground rules in your electronic mail message about comments, Owen?
I laid out the same thing that I kind of described to you. Which is folks need to subscribe to the YouTube channel. There is a 20 second delay. They can post comments and if their comment, you know, if someone says it's looking great. Then I'm not gonna interrupt you all to let you know that someone commented that the video looks great. But if they say, I have a specific question about X, Y, or Z, or can Jan Walter or Cheryl expand on A, B, and C? Then I'll be monitoring those questions and we'll bring them up to you. And yes, I laid all that out in the electronic email.
Okay, great.
And on the website.
So, I think no people scorecard. Um, and is there a financial review? I don't think so, right?
Um, no, what I put in the administrative report that I sent out to you all. Is that we had anticipated, like we discussed last time, where we weren't necessarily gonna do. Um, potential, uh, searching around for budgetary constraints. Um, that we did then feel comfortable entering all the proposed 2020 numbers. With the concern being if, if a lot was cut at town meeting, that's a lot of journal entries and a lot of potential for human error. Um, but where we will just see where things fall at town meeting. Um, we anticipate potentially fewer items being changed. And so Phil and I actually talked about that today. I said, geez, we, we kind of lost it in the sauce of this whole Corona. Um, but he, we're gonna review all those numbers tomorrow. Finalize and enter them into Trio. And then by tomorrow afternoon, we'll email out to you all. It will be the 2020. It'll be consumption based on the proposed 2020 budget. Um, but we'll also do some reflection on the 2019 budget to show you how far along we are in our current authorization to, to expend no more than last year's budget. So we'll show you where we are in the proposed budget and where we are in relation to last year's budget.
Um, are there any expenditures that we should be thinking about deferring that we haven't already?
No, um, we did make, I discussed with the business director at the RSU, uh, partial payments. Um, they went and looked at their cash flow analysis and said that they would very much appreciate a full payment. Um, and that it was going to be a strain on them to not. So we did do the full school payment and that decision was made only after the legislature authorized kind of that financial continuing res- uh, resolution. To where we now can exceed that one quarter of last year's budget that we had for approval at town meeting.
Right.
Um, no, where, I mean, your, your directive still stands to where it's essential items only. And then at some point in time, we can talk about the FEMA reimbursements and what the town is doing to um, prepare to, to submit items for FEMA for reimbursement specific to the Corona.
Um, questions from the board members on finances?
Yeah, I, I would just say my understanding from the legislation is that we are capped at last year's budget. We're not obligated line by line by last year's budget. So we've got a couple of issues I think that we've got to address. Early on, probably. That, uh, that weren't in last year's budget that are this year's issues. But we want to obviously keep the accounting to where we don't spend more than was authorized last year. Is that, am I, am I reading that? You guys reading that the same way?
Yeah. I am.
Yep.
Yep, that's how we're reading it as well. Um, and I think what we've been thinking in this office is some of the new items that are in the proposed 2020 budget. Or the items that were increased significantly based on budget and select board conversations. That until directed by you all, we would hold on that. Say, for example, if this goes for a while and we do get the grant for the, the playing surfaces. Um, resurfacing, you know, we would kind of hold off on that because it wasn't in last year's budget, but you're absolutely correct. We're not having to follow line item by line item. It is a total. Um, but some of the ones that seem to be 2020 specific that were new, though, we're holding off on those.
Yeah, I'm okay with it as long as it doesn't cost us money by holding on to it, you know? If, if, if we're gonna lose money by missing an opportunity, we need to talk about it, that's all.
And if any of those items come up, I will definitely keep you all informed of that. Um, as it stands right now, it's business as usual. Um, you know, we do have the Island Road project. Um, the resurfacing that we'd like to do on the playing surfaces. There's some other nice to haves that would, um, you know, we'd, we'd like to work on over time, but nothing pressing right now to where we would put ourselves in a worse financial position by deferring.
Okay. Alright, um, so I think next is, let's just recap, um, the steps that have been taken and why don't we start with Amy?
Hello, it's Amy. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so we are, um, updating wise. We have gotten PPE from the CDC. The CDC wants this week with that. Everybody's getting to be a shortage and and everything's going through the CDC. We cannot order anything for this on boundary or any of the medical supplies for the PPE, but we're keeping on top of it. We're doing our orders weekly through the CDC to make sure that we have enough. And hopefully we'll keep it that way. Um, I did get an email today. Our ambulance will not be in in two weeks because everything is shut down in New Jersey and they're not gonna let me come pick it up. Which I'm okay with right now. I don't really want to, um, put a couple of us at risk to go get it. We will be two weeks of the shutdown, so our, our ambulance will be now the first of May is what they're saying and they will deliver it to Maine and we'll inspect it in Maine and then, um, go from there. Other than that, we did add and, um, what we called, I sent you guys an email about an IC being on duty with us with any, um, U21 or any suspected Corona. And so that we have an extra person to call the hospital and that is going very well. That's what I have for update other than what I had sent to the last meeting.
Great. How, how many, uh, how are calls?
Um, right now even I met with, uh, the hospital and I met with us. Our calls are down, which means people are staying home and hopefully are healthy. And the hospital said they're actually down 30% of people coming into the emergency room. So it sounds like people are hopefully staying in and staying healthy and not getting out other than to, like you said, going to Hannaford and stuff that they have to do for food and stuff.
Great. Well, thank you so much, Amy.
You're welcome.
Owen, what, uh, why don't you just recap, especially for the audience, uh, the, the battening down the hatches actions that we've taken already?
Yep, definitely. So we are not allowing the general public to come into this building. Uh, we have, uh, increased our online capabilities through the municipal website for vehicle registration, ATVs, uh, snowmobiles, hunting and fishing licenses. So those can all be done online. Um, for some folks that find themselves maybe not in a re-register position, uh, but needing to get certain historical, um, unique identifiers, that's one of the reasons that we're continuing to stay here in this office. They'll call in and, um, Chelsea or Phil will need to look through our system. Provide them certain information so that they can complete the online registration. That is not for everyone. A lot of folks can do it by themselves. They don't need to contact the town office. Um, but for some people, we are, um, we've done some other, uh, increased capabilities, worked with the Secretary of State's office to allow Chelsea to be able to issue license plates and transit plates here in the town office itself where we hadn't done that before. Um, and we're really trying to minimize any sort of imperson transactions. So if folks do come to the town office, we're letting them go to the front door, read the sign that's on the front door. Um, a lot of folks choose to just go home, uh, because maybe their item is not essential. We do communicate with folks through the exterior windows. And if they can't process their items in any other fashion, they put it in a drop box. One of the staff goes out and retrieves it with gloves on. We come in, process that item, put it back in the drop box and the individual comes and collects it. And then based on the memo from the ambulance director. Staff is getting their temperature taken, uh, before they enter the office. And if they have signs and symptoms or elevated temperatures, uh, they'd be asked to go home. And, uh, her staff specifically is doing that on a regular basis. We're primarily, the admin staff is primarily doing it when we enter into work and not multiple times throughout the day.
Okay, um, questions for the board?
No, none for me.
Nope, I have none.
Another quick thing, I did talk with the fire chief today. Um, he said that basically his update was he's been in great communication with the ambulance director and his, um, other chiefs at the fire department. And that, uh, he didn't have any new updates for you all. Um, in addition to what he gave you as their procedures, uh, at our last meeting. Other than the items raised in Amy's memo about the temperature testing and items like that.
Okay. Alright, so, um, DM and Jay, last item on the formal agenda, or have there been any comments or questions?
Uh, no, not yet. I was just getting some hand and arm signals from the ambulance crew. Um, uh, what, before we get on to DM and Jay, just briefly, um, is part of that admin report that I sent out. Uh, FEMA is doing a reimbursement program for, I think it was category B items.
Yes.
Yeah, category B. We thought there might be some potential that some of the online services that we were doing might be reimbursable as we've gone over and reviewed it again in anticipation of collecting receipts. Uh, we don't think that those meet the standard of emergency protective measures. Um, but we'll be working with Knox County EMA to figure out what would be worth submitting, um, expenses for, for reimbursement and what wouldn't. But virtually everything that Amy's doing, so PPE, masks, cleaning supplies. Um, any of that stuff, I, I believe the incident command, so the increase in payroll that the ambulance service would have for having that third person on every call, uh, that Amy was describing before. Will submit, um, expenses for those as well. And then Amy, when you and I talked today, I had mentioned April 12th. Um, that's actually the day to register. That's the deadline for registration. Uh, we'll get the registration done before that and then we'll probably just try to get on a routine of submitting expenses based on what, uh, County EMA is telling us. They do have a lot of experience with this and they are keeping us updated about any changes in that posture. Dates get pushed back for extensions or if they expand what's allowable for reimbursement submissions. Um, they'll be communicating that information to us directly and through, um, Betty as well. And they do have some folks in the office that are really good at processing that and they've been great about saying, if you're confused about anything with this, just give us a call. Amy, did you have anything, uh, updated on, on that? Did I kind of capture that properly?
Nope, that was great. I do have a question or, uh, uh, yeah, for the board actually, if you have a second.
Sure.
Okay, um, right now with, I have two people, um, that would like to be hired for EMS and I know we're not having board meetings. Do I just send that through and get an okay where we're gonna be hopefully not gonna be low staff, but with this virus, having some people out and I do have people, two or three, that would like to be hired on, so. How do you want me to do that process?
Well, technically it violates the, um, um, the authorization that we have to, uh, to spend. Um, but what is the cost of somebody? What's the marginal cost of, of a new hire? Forget about, they only get paid when they're, when they're per DM on a call, right?
Right. Wait. Correct.
They're only paid when they're working.
Right.
So I, I think what you mean Walter is there are costs just to bring them out as an employee.
Exactly.
Physicals or anything like that that we have to do.
No, no, we, I send in, what I normally send in, I just have to do their background check and all that stuff. But other than that, it's just, I, I usually bring them to the board, you guys, okay, then meet them, all that stuff, so. Um, there's no expense other than when they come in and, and be oriented.
Raise my hand.
Go ahead.
Uh, I would think you could just recommend them in an email. And, uh, then we can re- review it and approve it.
Yeah, I mean, I can send their resumes if that's, would you rather me do that or however, if that's what you want me to do so that we can get them, you know, up to par and on oriented as soon as we can, so we can have some extra pretty Ms. If, if needed.
Well, I think more. Well, Amy, if you've reviewed their qualifications and recommend them, that's good enough for us, but I think, you know, would be fine. And then we can have some paper trail of response and look to meet them at a, at a future meeting.
Definitely. Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Alright, um, DM and Jay.
Yep, and there are still no comments. Um, and I'll try to refresh this thing just to make sure, but no comments from the public yet. Um.
If you're ready to consider a motion, Walter, I'll move that we, uh, renew the contract for another two-year period. You know, based on the parameters they've given us, which is basically a 2% increase.
Is there a second?
The contract for?
DM and Jay for, for, uh,
Yeah, okay.
For, this is, this is stump dump?
Yep, correct. Yep, I'm good. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Have to have a roll call. Alright, um, so that's done, Owen.
Um, yep, and then just designate.
Would you designate me as the signer?
Absolutely.
And, um, Cheryl, and then Owen can use, um, if you scan and send me this, the signature page, I'll sign it and send it back to you.
Yeah. I don't know if you want a motion, but I'll move that the Chair of the Board, uh, sign on behalf of the Board for the contract.
Second.
Any discussion? No? All in favor? Aye?
Gaudy, aye.
Alright, zoom in on my eye, aye.
Aye, aye.
He's a natural.
I got it.
Okay, so our next meeting is April 12th, I think. Yes. Uh, actually no, it's April 14th.
14th is the date that, uh, April 14th.
Um, yes, sorry, yes.
We shall keep on that schedule. I think, uh, there's no reason to change it. Um, and, um, if you need us, if, you know, if we need any earlier, we'll do that over, uh, phone. Yes, to Cheryl.
Um, we need to be signing the warrants at some point. Should we designate somebody to sign the warrants? The ones that we usually do at our meeting, the blue book.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm willing to come to the window, you know, if that's what you need.
I believe that we can do it the same manner that we'll do the contracts. Uh, to where we can scan those items. If, uh, the designee has the capabilities to print those items off at home and then sign and scan and send them back in, that will satisfy, we can do it for sure through the window. That's not a big deal. Um, but if, if Jan, uh, or whoever the designee does have that technology, we can do it that way as well. And again, minimize, uh, face-to-face contact.
Either way.
Okay.
Thank him.
Cheryl, if you move to make Jan the designated signer.
Yeah, that works for me. Yes, I saw move.
Yeah, I'll second that.
And let Jan decide how he wants to do it. I, I think just signing the existing documents probably would work. It's a lot of work to print every one of those.
Yeah, print and then scan and everything. I'd come over and do it when you're ready.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Um, I see, uh, Mel has joined. Is, is your audio working, Mel?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
So, yep.
Uh, do you have an update or request?
So, um, pretty much update, the only concerns that are going on right now, um, is the how long COVID-19 is actually active on surfaces? Um, that's kind of the, the only update I have. Other than that, I did have, um, a few of the daycare providers reach out and ask how long we assume that the lockdown or, you know, is going to, to occur. And as of right now, I'm just following RSU 13's guidelines of April 27th. And, um, you know, as soon as we get closer to that date, we'll figure it out. Um, if we need to do an extension, if it's going to take longer, I basically just am gonna follow the school. Um, with the childcare portion. Cause I think that, you know, if they're saying that it's not safe for kids to go to school, it's, you know, most likely not safe for a large group well over the 10, um, recommendation for gathering to, you know, to be together. So that's pretty much an update for me.
And then one thing that I'd like to do, um, tomorrow, we didn't, we, we watched portions of it here in the office. The governor had the, her briefing recently with an update. Um, I, I don't believe that we were shut down through any of that. They did talk about essential services. Um, again, it seemed to be more guidelines, but what I'd like to do is at some point review that press conference. I haven't received anything via email, specific directives to town offices by the executive branch. Um, but we'll review that and then work with, uh, Mo and Betty on if we're told to do anything different here in the town office.
Sounds good.
Alright. Okay.
Is there a considerate, another item, Walt, is, uh, consideration for appointees and that would normally be done in April?
Um.
What's, what's your thoughts? Uh, does like, I'm an inspector, might change? Are there any others?
Mo's appointment.
Yeah, so we, we've discussed over time, uh, the desire in this office to have, um, professionals here more often. And so the consolidation, if, uh, the credentials are there for both the CEO and the LPI position. At your last meeting, you did extend all of your appointments until an unspecified date. You all have the ability to, um, you know, remove and appoint anyone that you want. I will say that, um, we have not recently discussed this with Terry Brackett, our current LPI, just to get a sense of what he's thinking. Uh, if that's something that he is open to, then again, my recommendation would be consolidate these multiple positions into one individual so that they can be in the office more and helping us troubleshoot things out. Um, I just would just bring up that we haven't discussed this recently with Terry.
Okay, so I think that our action from last week, um, still holds that the appointments paid over until we get out of this, uh, situation. Uh, and I don't think we should address the, uh, LPI thing while we're in this state.
And, and luckily it's relatively good timing. I mean, this is a mid-month meeting. So it's not like we have to wait an entire month until the next time you all, uh, do this meeting. So I'll reach out to Terry, um, when we're done here, I'll send him an email and get his thoughts on it. And so by April 14th, well, we'll have a much better understanding of what Terry is thinking about and what he would support or his thoughts on it.
And Mel, you're, uh, marching down. And Mo, you're, um, marching down that certification path?
Yes, yep. I am, and, um, it is, my background is more in the LPI portion. So it's, I have been helping people when they come in with questions in regards to, um, designs and, and what the steps are. Cause I already have that knowledge base and, you know, if I'm there, I might as well already help them and explain it. Um, so I'm definitely for it for whenever you guys, um, make your decision and, um, based off of, you know, what Terry said, um, whatever he wants to do as well.
Cheryl, are you okay with this?
Um, personally, I would like to appoint Mo as the LPI. After, with your discussion with, with Terry and that, uh, he may still be willing to be our backup should that, that change occur. But, uh, he's doing both for the town of St. George and helping us out, which we greatly appreciate. But I think we have someone that's capable of doing, uh, both jobs now.
Alright, well, I think, you know, that, yeah, um, it's technically a direct report to us. So that's a directive or a conversation that, that, um, I should have. Not a de- delegate to, uh, to Owen.
Yeah, probably a good thought, Walter, yeah.
Great, that's fine. I'll hold off on that and, um, I, I definitely don't. Yeah, and I don't want to speak for Terry, um, but based on our conversations, I'm making an assumption that he would be more than happy to, to stay on as assistant for both of those CEO and LPI positions.
Yeah, I get the impression that A, he's busy in St. George, hence up, up until now. Um, and also that he's not interested in expanding his, um, his hours of work or his scope. I think he's closer to ours, our retirement state than he is to Mo's, uh, state in life. Just saying.
There were two things that I wanted to bring up, one of which I remember, the other which can't be that important. Um, one was just that we have been working with, uh, Dana at the stump dump. I think you all are, are kind of aware of this. Um, in making sure that that facility stays open at this time. Um, but also making sure that Dana is protected, um, from excessive contact. And so we've kind of gone over some of the processes in making sure that, you know, the right people are allowed in. Um, but while he's keeping a, a good safe distance, getting just the essential information, uh, license plate number and permit number. We're kind of slightly holding on some of the name and address stuff. We've already worked through a lot of the, um, transition permit issues. When we switch from old permits to new permits, really haven't seen any discrepancies recently. Um, so folks are doing a good job in that regard.
Good.
Oh, and here is the other thing. I think I brought it up to you all. You, you can walk down the halls of this office and see three different town lines between us and St. George. Um, we've, a lot of folks have been aware of it, that there's just irregularities on maps themselves. And so it got brought again to our attention. And so I reached out to Tim Polkey. We both get our property tax maps done by the same people, Aerial Survey. So we sent an email out to them saying, can you pull our tax maps? And tell us if there's any discrepancies between these two towns. I brought our tax maps down to St. George. Um, and we went over them. Terry Brackett was there, Tim Polkey and myself. And we did identify some things that were confusing. And then Aerial Survey identified one slight boundary irregularity between us and St. George. But it wasn't actually in the same place that Tim Polkey and I noticed just some oddities of things on our maps, property lines coming in that one would make an assumption it continued to the other town, but things would be a little bit off. Um, and so what we talked about was the potential of getting the boards together to look over these maps. Make, i- i- it appears that the actual irregularity is in why it's in our shoreline zoning map. It's back in the nineties when they did all the resource protection and wetland surveys. The federal government cared a lot less about the town boundaries and cared a lot more about identifying where the wetlands and resource protection was. And so there is this known discrepancy that doesn't affect the tax base, it doesn't affect who's in what town. But when indicated on certain maps that you pull around shoreline zoning, resource protection, wetlands, they've apparently, someone back in the day has told the feds and told members of the federal delegation or the congressional delegation, there's an irregularity here, can you all fix it? Um, so it doesn't affect anything except that our maps will indicate that certain properties in St. George, when it's not, and other properties in South Thomaston when it's not. And so someone coming in that owns property in South Thomaston might look at the map and say, I'm not actually, I'm not even part of your town, when in fact they are. So we'll try to flesh this out a little bit more, try to define it. One of the bigger reasons of kind of deferring it was that a boundary survey of potentially miles is quite expensive. We have isolated it. And the good news is, is any or, uh, the perceived discrepancies are all straight lines. And so what Tim and I talked about was maybe doing a little bit, uh, over time of staff work to where we're pulling, um, map and lots, correlating those with county book and pages and amassing the deeds that run along these lines. So that when we get to that point of bringing a surveyor in, we've done the kind of dirty work of historical records and pulling of documents. And hopefully what we're doing is getting members of the board together, walking the boundary between the two municipalities with a surveyor. Um, and it being a minimal cost to our town and to St. George to just have that really nice, warm and fuzzy that we know exactly where the two town boundaries are. And that one discrepancy is down around the Sprucehead Village area that we've already kind of known. There's, it's just funny over in there.
Yep. Okay.
Uh, just little historical data that that, our town line has changed twice, I believe. So, you know, it's moved a little bit, especially between South Thompson, St. George. You look at the old deeds and the, the deeds that were created before the change, property did go to the St. Georgetown line and then they moved the line.
Yeah.
Don't lose your land. So, you know, you just, those are little things.
And that was the interesting thing was seeing, um, some of the property boundaries of individual plots. And they continue in straight lines from our town into that town. And so I don't know if that was a boundary moving back and forth type thing. But yeah, as, as far as anyone, uh, looking and watching and understanding, uh, everyone is placed in the right town. There's just been some ongoing confusion, but it seems like the bigger irregularity was just a perceived one because of how the feds generated those maps when they did all that surveying, um, back in the day.
Alright. Um, is there any other old business, new business?
Uh, one old business just thought of. Did we get a, a price yet on a, the furnace, looking ahead?
No, I'll reach back out to Jerry Hardula. He, if I had to make a guess, he actually already has it. Um, and just somehow hasn't sent it over to us. He's, he's been doing some work on it. I will say the one thing was, I let him know what we had in our reserve. And he indicated that he thought that the cost of the system that he would recommend for us exceeded what we had in our reserve by a healthy amount. Um, I didn't really, I said, I'm, I'm not sure what that actually means for us because we can't bump it up. Right now, we have a proposed budget. Um, but I would definitely look to him and his recommendation and not try to put in a system of which we didn't feel comfortable was ready for the long haul. Um, but yes, I will make a note of that and reach out to Jerry and, um, see if he has that. And I'll, as soon as I get it, I'll provide it to you all just for your review.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think Owen, to be honest with you, it's gonna be a significant enough amount of money that we ought to go out with an RFP and get a couple of bids on it. You know, somebody come in and assess what we need and, and and, and, you know, give us some alternative. I mean, certainly Jerry's one of those that should, I would hope would bid on it, but he knows the system. And I don't think we need to rush into it. I mean, I know we, we've, we've been worrying about that furnace for several years. But somehow it keeps to, keeps limping through the winter season. And hopefully it will finish this one out.
We feel, we feel really comfortable, um, about it making it through this season for sure. Um, it was kind of looking over the maintenance records and realizing that we are putting more resources into that furnace than we have and we're calling him more frequently than we ever have before. We can continue to limp along for a while and, and we'll be fine. It's just gonna be increased maintenance costs.
Yep.
And I agree that this, this should, uh, go out to bid. So we shall tackle that.
Yeah, my, my hope with my hope with an estimate is just to give us a first pass at rough numbers that, you know, wha- what is our ballpark at a minimum? And then based on that, you all can, you know, figure out, do we have close to the amount of resources? Let's go out to RFP right now, or do we be a little more thoughtful, take a little bit more time? Because we know we're gonna have to put some more money aside to accomplish the full, um, extent of it.
Yep.
Agree. Alright, um, any other comments?
Betty's on. I don't know if she has anything that she wants to chime in on. Before we depart.
No, can you hear me?
Yep.
No, I, I think you've covered it all. So, we're good.
Alright, well, see you all on April 14th, if not before.
Yeah. Owen, thank you for your, uh, work in setting this up. I think it worked pretty well.
For a, for a non-techy. I'm really hoping it all worked out okay. We've had six, we have six people watching right now and still no comments.
Alright, good.
Cheryl has moved to adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye.
God, you aye?
Waterman, aye. Good night.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Owen. You bet, thank you.